I'd like to call the Monday, January 24th, 2022, Blue Springs Planning Commission Meeting in order. If everybody could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you and welcome everybody this evening and those watching at home. If we can please have a roll call.
Commissioner Crowell.
Present.
Commissioner Banks.
Present.
Commissioner Peel.
Present.
Commissioner Veal.
Present.
Commissioner Rohr.
Yes.
Commissioner Billups.
Present.
Commissioner Stokenberry.
Present.
Commissioner Graham.
Present.
Commissioner Honeycutt.
Present.
Commissioner Chair Sanderson.
Present. All right. Tonight's agenda consists of Item 1A, the main minutes from January 10th Planning Commission Meeting. Items 2 and 3 is a rezoning and general development plan for Blue Springs Aquatic Center. Item 4, conditional use permit for Harmony House. Item 5 and 6 is rezoning and planned development concept plan for Redwood Blue Springs. Item 7, site plan design review with alternative development standards for Rancho's Mexican restaurant. Item 8, preliminary plat for Blue Springs Aquatic Center. Item 9, preliminary plat for Redwood Blue Springs. Item 10 and 11, planned development plan and final plat for Chapman Ridge First Phase and Item 12 is other business. At this time, I entertain a motion on the consent agenda for the approval of the January 10th, 2022 meeting minutes. So moved. Have a motion from Commissioner Honeycutt. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Crowell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that motion carries. I'll now open the public hearing for Agenda Item 2 and 3, rezoning, RZ 1221-8078 and general development plan, GDP 1221-8081 for Blue Springs Aquatic Center. We'll also hear the preliminary plat, PP 1221-8082 with the staff presentation. And I would ask for exhibits from our city attorney, Jackie Summer.
For RZ 12-21-8078, I offer the following exhibits into the record. One, staff report with attachments. Two, applicant plans with attachments. Three, affidavit of publication in the examiner on December 23, 2021. Four, 185-foot notification map. Five, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. Six, copy of the letter sent to said property owners. Seven, Title IV Land Use Section Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference. And eight, 2014 comprehensive plan by reference. And for GDP-12-21-8081, I offer the following exhibits into the record. One, staff report with attachments. Two, applicant plans with attachments. Three, affidavit of publication in the examiner on December 23, 2021. Four, 185-foot notification map. Five, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. Six, copy of the letter sent to said property owners. Seven, Title IV Land Use Section Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference. And eight, 2014 comprehensive plan by reference.
All right. Thank you. And now as for the staff's presentation, Mr. Wright.
Thank you, Chair Sanderson and Commissioners. Before this evening is a request for a rezoning general development plan and a preliminary plat for the Blue Springs Aquatic Center addition, as well as the existing Blue Springs Field House, which is located at 305 Northeast Mock Avenue and 425 Northeast Mock Avenue. The first request this evening is for rezoning of the subject property from MF20 High Density Multifamily, SO Service Office and GB General Business to PLOS, which is Public Land and Open Space. Rezoning to the property to PLOS is the first step in allowing the existing field house to be expanded to accommodate indoor and outdoor aquatics and associated site improvements. The Public Land and Open Space zoning district accommodates community parks and recreation facilities. The second and third requests are for a general development plan and a preliminary plat, which provides a conceptual plan for the site. Access to the site will be provided through an existing access drive on the east side of the property and then a relocation of the western access, or the western access that currently is in the center of the property, further to the west. The site includes an approximately 32,000 square foot indoor addition that will provide the indoor aquatics component, as well as an expanded lobby area. And then the remainder of the expansion will be for outdoor aquatics. As noted in the staff report, the building and site is classified as a general commercial building, rather than a prominent civic building. The site location in a predominantly commercial corridor is a more appropriate building type since prominent civic buildings are generally located in predominantly residential areas. Staff believes that the conceptual building renderings meet the intent of the building design standards and final building design will be addressed through the site plan design review application process. A Schedule C parking study is required to be provided to determine parking needs for parks and recreational facilities. A parking study has been provided and included in the packet that shows the current site has 205 spaces. With the expansion, the site will have 315 spaces, which is an increase of 110 spaces. These additional park, the additional parking study will provide, the additional parking provides a surplus based on the peak time demand for weekdays and weekends. This surplus can better accommodate special events throughout the year. Pedestrian access has been provided from the street to the building entrance, as well as adjacent to parking areas. However, a modification is requested as part of the general development plan to reduce the minimum sidewalk width from eight feet to five feet for parking areas with vehicle overhang. That's predominantly along the access drives. Between the parking and the outdoor aquatic center, that is where they're requesting that reduction from six to five feet. In addition to that modification, an additional minor modification is proposed for the southernmost drive aisle. Where 26-foot drive aisles require, they are requesting to reduce that to 24. These reductions are needed to provide sufficient landscape buffering along Mock Avenue, as well as preserve as many of the existing street trees along that portion as possible. Conceptual landscape plan has been provided, which is provided on the screen. Final landscaping plans will be reviewed in greater detail with a site plan design review. On the screen are some of the conceptual renderings of the facility, particularly the outdoor aquatic center component. Staff reviewed the rezoning request and finds that the rezoning request meets other goals within the 2014 comprehensive plan. Those include improving access and visibility of parks and recreation areas and facilities in the city. Staff also reviewed the general development plan under the review criteria and finds that the request is in compliance with the review criteria, with the exception of the two minor modifications, including the reduction in the sidewalk width adjacent to parking from eight feet to five feet and the reduction in the south drive aisle width from 26 feet to 24 feet to preserve existing trees along Mock Avenue. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning, approval of the general development plan with one condition, and approval of the preliminary plat with three conditions. As part of the approval, Condition 1A with the general development plan should read eight feet to five feet, instead of eight feet to six feet. So that is one minor modification to the conditions that need to be made. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for staff by the Commissioners?
I could, I, excuse me.
Yes, Commissioner Banks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do want to ask a question. If there's going to be any activities at Field House and with the attraction that this is going to bring, I guess I could take this off. Is there consideration on extended parking area to be expanded sometime?
Yeah, the parking study that is included takes into account both the field, the existing field house, as well as the addition. So the parking that is provided here can accommodate both facilities.
My question though was, is there an opportunity for it to be expanded if we find that there's more need for more parking? Even though you've considered both?
Yeah, there is the additional parking over here on the east side of the building that was installed a couple of years ago. Believe that parking was also included with that 315 space count. I will let the architect speak to if there's any other areas for parking, but generally it looks like they have utilized most of the site that they can with the amount of parking. And again, they were about, I believe, 80-something spaces over what the peak parking demand for a normal day would be.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yep, you're welcome. Any other questions for staff, I Commissioners? All right. Thank you. Would the applicant like to come forward and speak? You'll need to be sworn in and then state your name and address for the record, please.
Just always worry that somebody about to give this case, need to prove something out.
I will.
Brian Garvey, SFS Architecture. We're at 2100 Central Street in Kansas City, Missouri. I'm a principal with SFS and a project manager on this project. I've been part of this since the study back in 2020. I think staff's done a nice job, both coordinating with our team and all of our consultants on the project. We've had a couple of back and forths on recent middles and some clarifications and questions. To answer your question and concern about parking again, Matt, what you stated is pretty accurate. We have basically filled this entire site brimming with parking, but before that it occurred, we had this parking study. So the directive from Parks and Rec was, let's not just meet the minimum from the peak demand. Let's max out wherever we can and wherever it makes sense without taking away from the programmatic components of the project. So that 80-plus parking space surplus should handle the peak demand and then the overlap for like special events such as tournaments or other activities that might occur and overlap with that peak demand.
Thank you.
Other than that, happy to answer any questions or tell you more about the project.
Any questions for this, the applicant by Commissioners? See none. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak in favor of this project? Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak in opposition to this project? Okay. See none. Any further discussion by the Commissioners?
Chair?
Yes, Mr. Peel.
I love this project. I think this project has been needed in Blue Springs for several years now. I will be voting in favor of approval.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Peel.
Thank you, Chair.
Any other comments or discussion by the Commissioners?
I'd like to second what Commissioner said. It's definitely something that is going to be great for our city and I'm glad to see that we're moving forward with something like this. So I do intend on planning, or voting yes on this.
Thank you. Any other final comments? Close the public hearing and ask for a motion on the rezoning.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Banks.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the public hearing rezoning ours for Blue Springs Aquatics Center,
Have a motion from Commissioner Banks. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Honeycutt. This will be a roll call vote.
Commissioner Banks?
Aye.
Commissioner Peel?
Aye.
Commissioner Veal?
Aye.
Commissioner Rohr?
Aye.
Commissioner Billups?
Aye.
Commissioner Stokenberry?
Aye.
Commissioner Graham?
Aye.
Commissioner Honeycutt?
Aye.
Commissioner Crowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Chair Sanderson?
Aye.
So that motion carried. That item will be recommended and heard by the City Council their Monday, February 7th meeting at 6:00 PM. Now ask for a motion on the general development plan.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Banks.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the general development plan, GDP-12-21-8081 with the one staff condition.
Thank you, Mr. Banks. I have a motion from Commissioner Banks. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Honeycutt. This will also be a roll call vote.
Commissioner Peel?
Aye.
Commissioner Veal?
Aye.
Commissioner Rohr?
Aye.
Commissioner Billups?
Aye.
Commissioner Stokenberry?
Aye.
Commissioner Graham?
Aye.
Commissioner Honeycutt?
Aye.
Commissioner Crowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Banks?
Aye.
And Commissioner Chad Sanderson?
Aye.
All right. So that motion also carried with the one staff condition. That item will be recommended and heard by the City Council their Monday, February 7th meeting at 6:00 PM. And finally, I'd ask for a motion for the preliminary plat.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Banks.
Go ahead and finish this up. I would like to make a motion to approve the preliminary plat, PP-12-21-8082 with the three staff conditions.
Thank you. Have a motion from Commissioner Banks. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Honeycutt. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So that motion carried with three conditions. All right. We move to Item 4 and open the public hearing for the conditional use permit, CUP 1221-8090 for Harmony House, and ask for exhibits from our city attorney, Jackie Summer.
I offer the following exhibits into the record. Exhibit 1, staff report with attachments. Two, applicant plans with attachments. Three, affidavit of publication in the examiner on January 8, 2022. Four, 185-foot notification map. Five, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. Six, copy of the letter sent to said property owners. Seven, Title IV Land Use Section Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference. And eight, 2014 comprehensive plan by reference.
All right. Thank you. And as for staff presentation, Ms. Kelly.
Good evening. Before you this evening are requests for the expansion of the Harmony House Commercial Daycare for adults with disabilities. Harmony House Care Homes has been in operation since 2019 at the property located at 910-920 Southwest 37th Street, which is located approximately 300 feet north of Southwest Westbound 40 Highway and east of Southwest 37th Street, under the approval of a conditional use permit. The business owners are now requesting to expand the facility to the adjacent property, 930 Southwest 37th Street, which is this building right here. Let's see. Harmony House Care Homes Daycare Program currently employs 18 staff members and cares for approximately 40 participants. They are projecting an increase to about 26 staff members and about 90 participants. The total acreage of the two lots combined is approximately 0.88 acres and is zoned GB PUD, which is General Business Planned Unit Development. Commercial daycares are allowed in GB zoning districts under the approval of a conditional use permit. Under the original conditional use permit, vehicles are required to utilize the Southwest 37th Street access point and are not permitted to use the Southwest 40 Highway access point. The same condition of approval is being requested by staff so as not to create dangerous traffic situations on Southwest 40 Highway. Staff believes that the proposed use is compatible with the surrounding area and adjacent businesses. Staff reviewed the applications and find that all review criteria that has been met and allows improvements to be made to a vacant building. Staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit with three conditions. And I will stand for any questions.
All right. Thank you. Any questions by the Commissioners for staff?
Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Peel.
Ms. Kelly, is the parking, I think, is supposed to be shared in this particular area with the other businesses that are in that location?
Yes, this development has, is conditioned, all parking is shared in this particular development, but the majority of traffic will be pickup and drop-off. So there won't be, you know, the participants will not be using any of the parking, but, yes.
I understand there will be additional staff, so.
There will be additional staff. And yes, the parking is more than sufficient to accommodate the staff.
Right.
And also, it's noteworthy that this business here is a bar that has opposite peak hours. So there are opposite times of business, so they won't be in conflict with one another.
Okay, understood. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Yep, you're welcome. Any other questions for staff by the Commissioners? See none. Thank you. Would the applicant like to come forward and speak? Okay. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak in favor of this project? Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak in opposition to this project? Any other discussion or comments by the Commissioners? We close the public hearing and ask for a motion on the conditional use permit.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Veal.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the conditional use permit, CUP 1221-8090 with the three conditions for Harmony House.
All right. Have a motion from Commissioner Veal. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Honeycutt. This will be a roll call vote.
Commissioner Veal?
Aye.
Commissioner Rohr?
Aye.
Commissioner Billups?
Aye.
Commissioner Stokenberry?
Aye.
Commissioner Graham?
Aye.
Commissioner Honeycutt?
Aye.
Commissioner Crowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Banks?
Aye.
Commissioner Peel?
Aye.
And Commissioner Chad Sanderson?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. So that motion carried with three staff conditions. This item will be recommended and heard by the City Council their Monday, February 7th meeting at 6:00 PM. I'll now open the public hearing for Agenda Items 5 and 6, rezoning, RZ 1221-8093 and planned development concept, Plan PDC 1221-8092 for Redwood Blue Springs. We'll also hear the preliminary plat, PP 1221-8094 with the staff presentation. I'd ask for exhibits from our city attorney, Jackie Summer.
For RZ 12-21-8093, I offer the following exhibits into the record. One, staff report with attachments. Two, applicant plans with attachments. Three, affidavit of publication in the examiner on January 8, 2022. Four, 185-foot notification map. Five, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. Six, copy of the letter sent to said property owners. Seven, Title IV Land Use Section Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference. And eight, 2014 comprehensive plan by reference. And for PDC-12-21-8092, I offer the following exhibits into the record. One, staff report with attachments. Two, applicant plans with attachments. Three, affidavit of publication in the examiner on January 8, 2022. Four, 185-foot notification map. Five, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. Six, copy of the letter sent to said property owners. Seven, Title IV Land Use Section Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference. And eight, 2014 comprehensive plan by reference.
All right. Thank you. At this time, I'd ask for staff presentation. Mr. Wright.
All right. Thank you, Chair Sanderson and Commissioners. Before this evening, our request for rezoning, a PD concept plan and a preliminary plat for Redwood Blue Springs, which is a proposed multifamily development north of Wyatt Road, generally 500 feet west of Southwest 7 Highway. This property is currently zoned GB General Business. The first request is to rezone the subject property from General Business to PD Residential, which is a planned development. The 2014 comprehensive plan included most of the subject property as mixed density residential with the southeastern area of the property designated as mixed-use employment dominant. Mixed density residential includes residential living in a range of formats totaling 5 to 12 units per acre. And mixed-use employment dominant include a mix of businesses that help support job creation. The Southwest 7 Highway frontage is being retained for future commercial development as part of this proposal, which would provide that additional area for the mixed-use employment dominant job creation area. The intent of the PD zoning district is to encourage unique and high-quality neighborhoods, commercial or mixed-use development through an integrated development plan that provides flexibility to the standard zoning district regulations. The remaining requests are for a PD concept plan and a preliminary plat. The preliminary plat, which is on the screen, covers the entire existing 37.6-acre parcel. The preliminary plat includes one lot, 26.6 acres for the multifamily development, and then the remaining 10.7 acres along the commercial frontage will be retained as a commercial tract. Designated as a tract will require future plating and development plan approval prior to any development on the remaining 10.7 acres. The PD concept plan covers the 26.6 acres that is requested to be rezoned and is proposed to be plotted again as one lot. Proposed development includes 124 multifamily units with a mix of single-story buildings with four to eight units each. The net density for the site is 4.76 units per acre. Access to the site will be provided via one access drive to Southwest Wyatt Road and then an additional point of access to Southwest Major Road, which will be extended from Southwest 7 Highway to the site. Eventually, a second point of access will be provided to Major Road whenever Major Road is extended, which will be related to future development to the north, as well as future development to the west, as part of the Southwest Park development. Internal access drives for the site will be private access drives. They are not public streets. A detail of the street has been provided on the plan on the screen, which shows a 22-foot-wide private drive aisle with an additional six-foot sidewalk on one side of the street that is flush with the drive, but will have a stained concrete pavement to differentiate it from the pavement, or from the drivable surface. Elsewhere on the site, five-foot sidewalks are required on both the north side of Major Road and the north side of Wyatt Road. And then an eight-foot sidewalk is required on the south side of Major Road to complete the, to begin this section of the hike bike trail that will eventually connect to Southwest Park, that will eventually go all the way through to Adams Ferry Parkway. Through the PD zoning and concept plan, the site is being reviewed under the apartment complex building type and the MF10 Low Density Multifamily Zoning District standards. The plan meets all requirements of the apartment building type for setbacks, density, building separation, coverage and height. Each unit includes a front-loaded two-car garage and with a driveway for two additional parking spaces, for a total of four spaces required, or provided per unit, which is double what is required under the code. Additionally, 31 guest parking spaces are found throughout the site. There's one up here at the northwest corner, one near the club, or the, sorry, not the club, it's the leasing office and the mailbox center. And then a few others located throughout the site for additional off-street parking for guests. Conceptual building elevations have been provided within the PD Development Standard document that is included in the packet. Again, these are single-story units attached with four to eight units each. Each unit includes the two-car front-loaded garage with two parking spaces. Building designs include a variety of footprints with four different floor plans ranging in size from just under 1,300 square feet up to 1,600 square feet of finished base per unit. Building materials include a mix of masonry and vinyl siding with lap and shake styles and a mix of colors. Variations in roof designs have also been provided, including the incorporation of dormers to reduce monotony within the development. The residential design standards do limit the maximum coverage of 25% of the facade for garage doors. The proposed building plans include up to 74% of the front facade being garage doors. As the additional off-street parking and covered parking is an enhancement for the community, a modification through the PD concept plan is proposed to allow this exception. As part of that exception, the applicant is proposing enhanced garage door design, which includes added design details and hardware to mitigate the additional coverage, which is shown in the screen, shown on the images on the screen. The site is required 40% open space and 10% active open space. The site includes 60.4% of the site as open space and 22.8% of the active open space. The active open space includes a preserve area, which preserves the existing stream buffer, as well as adjacent natural areas around it, which is shown in the darker gray shading. In addition to the stream buffer, an eight-foot hard surface trail is provided along the eastern edge of the stream buffer. That trail will also have three different connections into the neighborhood as approximately .4 miles. All multifamily projects over three acres are required to have a pedestrian circulation system of six-foot sidewalks connecting all building entrances, streets, internal access drives and amenities. In similar developments with public streets, four-foot sidewalks have been provided on both sides of the street to meet that requirement. The applicant is proposing six-foot sidewalks on one side of the internal access drive. The applicant, staff does believe that the intent of the pedestrian circulation system requirements have been met as there are no curbs on the internal access drives for an easy transition from building entrance to sidewalk, from street to sidewalk. The plan meets all requirements of the UDC, except for the two items, as noted, related to the garage coverage and the pedestrian circulation system regarding the intent of sidewalks on both sides of the drives. Staff does believe that these modifications are offset by other plan enhancements, including the additional design details of the garage doors, decreases in underutilized excessive pavements, while still providing a walkable neighborhood, significantly wider landscape buffers than required along the exterior side of the property. Most buffers are only required to be 15 feet. The plan provides 50-foot buffers around the entire perimeter. And also, the preservation of the stream buffer and surrounding natural areas is an enhancement that benefits residents, not only of the community, but also adjacent Southwest Park. Staff reviewed the rezoning requests and finds that all review criteria has been met. The rezoning and the proposed land use aligns with the comprehensive plan and the S1 area plan. The rezoning retains the commercial frontage along Southwest 7 Highway for future development in accordance with the comprehensive plan and creates an appropriate transition to the community uses to the west, including a fire station and Southwest Park. Staff reviewed the concept plan request and finds that all review criteria has also been met. Plan is compatible with development pattern along Southwest 7 Highway, which generally consists of commercial front- consists of commercial frontages transitioning to various densities of residential land uses. The preservation of the natural features on the site reduces off-site impacts of Southwest Park, and the plan also meets the housing and image goals of the comprehensive plan, including increasing the quantity and diversity of housing, as well as protecting and strengthening natural areas. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning, approval of the concept plan with one condition, and approval of the preliminary plat with six conditions, and I'll stand for any questions.
All right, thank you. Any questions for staff by the Commissioners?
Chair?
Yes, Commissioner.
Oh, yield the.
Without getting overly technical, I'm concerned, I get concerned every time we start talking about private streets. Can you tell me the difference between what they're doing and what we would require if these were public streets? And you said something about no curbs, and that, again, raises a red flag for me for some reason.
Yep, so bring up that diagram again, showing what is proposed, but also have our Assistant to Public Works Director, Adam Hilde Dick, respond to that.
Okay, so, I guess one of the things that, sorry, so this street has kind of a different design. It's inverted as opposed to crowned. Water comes to the center and then it's collected there. Our streets have a curb and gutter, so the crown pushes water to the outside, and then it's collected in storm sewer and discharged elsewhere. This street is still functioning, you know, it's still designed to collect and convey stormwater. It's just a different look than the ones that we would typically construct. So, yeah, the ownership maintenance aspects would go to the development team ownership. So, city wouldn't have any responsibility for snowplow or maintenance aspect or anything like that. We typically don't do concrete streets. That's just kind of a Blue Springs preference. There's some background behind that. This is proposed as a concrete street. Concrete, you know, that's certainly, I mean, a suitable drive surface. It's just not our standard. So, in short, I mean, there's differences in the function and in the design of them, but I think both our standard and this typical section serve the development, so.
What about width? Would our normal street be twenty-two foot wide with a sidewalk right on top of it like that, or would be?
Our normal street in a residential area is twenty-four feet wide, but that's the drive area. That's in between the concrete curbs. So you add another basically foot on either side, so it becomes twenty-six feet or so. This is twenty-eight feet when you add the drive plus the sidewalk.
But hopefully nobody's driving on the sidewalk.
Right, but in the event, like, of an emergency, if there was an emergency vehicle that needed additional lane width, I think that was part of the design, excuse me, because it's the same thickness of street. I don't want to get too in detail with their design, but just, yeah, so with regard to our normal street width, they're twenty-four feet of asphalt.
Thank you.
Chris Capio, do you have a question for staff?
I think I'll, I will reneg on my request for an audience. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff by Commissioners?
I just want to clarify something. So, we're going from, you said, so in Blue Springs typically, you said twenty-six feet wide for a street, correct?
Twenty-eight feet back-to-back, which includes basically four feet of curb, so it's a twenty-four-foot drive.
So they're going to twenty-two feet. So, if people are parked on the side of the road, is that not something that's going to happen?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's no parking allowed in this development as proposed.
Okay. No street parking?
No, on-street parking.
Any other questions by Commissioners for staff? Okay, none, thank you. Would the applicant like to come forward and make a presentation or speak? So you're going to be sworn in and then state your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Richard Batt. I'm with Redwood Living, seven zero zero seven East Pleasant Valley Road, Independence, Ohio, four-four-one-three-one. So I'll start out telling you a little bit about who Redwood is and what we do. I will get to your commentary on the street as well, and so, I want you to go ahead. So, we just, we were founded in nineteen ninety-one. We just celebrated our thirtieth anniversary recently. The company has grown quite a bit. We have over a hundred of these neighborhoods throughout the Midwest and the Carolinas. Around thirteen thousand units, now actually more than thirteen thousand, probably even fourteen thousand. We're in seven states, and a very important point, we build and we keep. We're not sellers of property. We own the first one we've ever built. You see on the right our core values. Just to, one of the things that I started on before, we do one thing really well. We have a product, we have it down, we know what we're doing, and we've been very successful. We're leased in the high nineties percents everywhere we go. Next, please. Again, state map, talked about the seven states, four more in the way, one of those four, of course, is Missouri. I'm standing in front of you guys today. Next, please. So, who are our tenants? And this is a very important slide. The majority of our tenants are empty nesters. That's not all, but the majority. The ones that are not empty nesters are typically young professionals who have a desire for safety and peace and quiet. You know, we do well with first responders, with medical people, with airport employees, people that, you know, want quiet, they want, you know, not a lot of noise, they want to be able to sleep during the day if they need to, they may have rotating shifts, various reasons that they want peace and quiet. Single-story design, you know, a lot of our empty nester residents in particular are interested in single-story design. Our units are all fair housing accessible, A D A accessible units. You know, we have, if they're not accessible at the beginning, they are adaptable under the A D A laws. Single-story design to those people is very important. No stairs is very important. Again, peace and quiet, maintenance-free. We take care of everything. We cut the grass, we plow the snow. If there's a crack in the street, we take care of the crack in the street. That is all ours. That is not on the community to take care of. That belongs to us, Redwood, for us to take care of our site for our residents. Our design, two-bedroom, two-bath, two-car attached garage with a patio. It lives like a house. People are moving to Redwood for various reasons. Always in the market, there's been renters by choice, but beyond that, empty nesters have other reasons. I mean, they want to move out of their homes, they don't want to cut the grass anymore, they don't want to have the maintenance, maybe want to go to Florida for a while, maybe they need the money out of their house as part of their retirement plan. There's a lot of reasons that people want to move to Redwood. So, important slide, this is giving you more of who our residents are. Average age is fifty-point-six, seventy percent empty nesters. Another very important thing to why we want to be in Blue Springs. People have moved to Blue Springs, they bought homes here, they like it here, they want to stay here. Typically, the majority of our tenants come from within a three-mile circle of our property. And we've done the studies on that, and they do that for a reason. They want to go, they want to go to the church they've always gone to. They want to use the public rec centers, or they want to use the private rec centers. They want to go to the library. They have friends here, they have relatives here. So when they come to Blue Springs and want to stay here, we're giving them a housing option to come rent a very nice apartment and stay in your community and continue to do the things they've always been doing. Shop in your stores, volunteer in various organizations, vote in the city, those kind of things. We are not, our units are not heavily populated. You see one-point-six, over the thirteen thousand units, one-point-six-five residents per unit. Again, our floor plans are attractive to empty nesters. We're fair housing compliant, we're leased to everybody who is qualified to rent, but our units are very attractive to empty nesters because of the single-floor design, the attached garage. It's safe. Hit your garage door opener, pull your car in the garage, put it down behind you, and you're safe in your home. The private patios are also a big thing to people. Make it live like a house. We are not a heavy burden on traffic. As you can see, again, over our thirteen thousand units, we average one-point-five cars per home. In addition, often, empty nesters do not travel at peak times, so we are not expecting to be a major impact on your traffic. Children, you know, I talked about who our tenants are. Typically, there are not a lot of children. Again, study of our own portfolio, fourteen thousand units, typically, there are seven children per one hundred homes. So in this neighborhood, there'll be eight, nine children. We're a net plus for the school district. We're paying taxes, there are not a lot of kids that they're servicing in the schools. Our standard lease term is one year. Average residence stay is two-point-three, nine years. It's a little skewed because of a lot of our units are newer, you know, most of our explosive growth has been in the five or six, last five or six years, seven years. So our, those averages keep going up and up and up as some of the neighborhood's age. Right now, twelve percent of our residents are staying more than five years. Next slide, please. So, we are very careful to who we rent to. One, we have a very tough lease. To your point, we do not, in the terms of our lease, it is prohibited for you to park on the street. But we have a very tough lease, we vet our tenants. We vet our tenants more than people can vet their neighbor. We do credit scores, we do rental histories, we do civil judgment checks, we do background checks, and if you have blemishes on your record, we will not rent to you. One thing about being a rental community, people can leave, and one bad tenant can impact your entire property. Next, please. So, exteriors, Matt showed some exteriors, you know, I'm kind of showing you actually the same pictures. Again, two-car attached garage, personal patios or decks, extensive landscaping. Our landscaping requirements, we balance our landscaping requirements against yours, and as Matt already mentioned, you know, ours are higher. We're doing a larger landscape buffer than's been required. We are preserving a lot of space around the creek. We are doing a walking path through this. It's all landscape-friendly. Next, please. Interiors, again, as Matt discussed, about thirteen hundred square feet to about eighteen hundred square feet. They're open floor plans, there's a lot of light in them, and we do high-quality finishes, granite countertops, stainless steel appliances, vaulted ceilings, and we do energy to start construction. Again, who our constituents are are concerned about their electric build, and ours are built in a way that we're taking in mind that important aspect of what people are looking for. Next, please. So, I added to the presentation some photographs of a neighborhood that we built in two thousand and six. So that is fifteen years old, and you can see, it's well landscaped, well-maintained. The finishes, at that time, we were doing a little bit lower finishes, or a lot lower finishes than we're doing now, but you can see, we maintain our property. We're long-term holders. As conditions of our mortgages, we're required to put away money for future large projects. In a lot of cases, we actually put away more money than the lenders ask us, because we're in this for the long haul. Next, please. So, maintenance, again, snow removal, all road and walking surfaces, salting, mowing. I want to get to the road right here. So we choose a certain road specification, which is a twenty-two-foot wide plus the six-foot addition on sidewalk adjacent to that, and we do that for a reason. You know, there's a lot of conversation about curbs. Again, remember, we're A D A compliant, remember who our tenants are. We don't want barriers. Our tenants don't want barriers. They want to be able to come out of your unit, and if they're on a walker, or there may be a little unsteady on their feet, or they're on a wheelchair, they can traverse our site without inconvenience, without barriers, and that's the reason for that. And to the commentary about the width of the street where it's twenty-two plus six, we actually build a six-foot sidewalk to road specifications. So if there is a fire truck that needs to plant its legs down for some reason, or there's a heavy vehicle that needs to come in there, and it needs to work, a fire truck needs to come in there and it needs to work its way around something to get there, we actually have more surface for them to be able to do that than you actually have on your private, on your public streets, because our drive surface area is larger. Next slide, please. So, location, we talked about, we'll just move on from that. Site plan, a couple of things I'd like to point out, and again, the amount of area in the center that we're maintaining as a green space, that was important. The second part of it is, we work with staff, and we were blessed with working with great staff. Adam, these guys, they've been very helpful to us. They provided some guidance along the, I'm going to, don't ask me north, southeast, west. The bottom right, they, that, they came to us and said, "Look, you're planning this, we're trying to plan this area too, and we would like that corner to be a larger piece of property," because we're hoping to not be producing or approving all long strip centers. We're hoping to get something maybe bigger there, maybe a grocery store, or, you know, whoever a bigger use could be at the time. So we work with staff to do that. The other thing we work with staff quite a bit on is major road. You know, you guys have a formula, when you're doing a development like this, you, the developer needs to participate in the cost of that road up to fifty percent of the length of your property, and that is what we're doing on Southwest Major Road, but beyond that, there was a commentary from one of your council people, that I don't want this road to look like something that is driving through a residential neighborhood. I want this road to look like it's going to be an entry to a park, because that's what's going to go there behind us. So, you go ahead. So, we drew a perspective of what we're planning on Southwest Major Road. We're doing some birmingham, birmingham along the road, and we are putting our property to the side of it, and we're making it look like it is an entry to the park, and we're setting the stage for that, for the future segments of that road that, you know, again, as Matt said, if and when that gets developed by whoever. Go ahead. So floor plans, you can see floor plans, again, two-car attached garage, two-bedroom, two-bath. Capewood on the left has a sunroom option to it that we have, some of those worked into the plan. The Willow Wood is just a little bit different configuration of a two-car, two-car garage, two-bedroom, two-bath with a private patio. That's our standard. So, there's some exteriors of Forest Woods and Meadow Woods, exteriors of the Forest Woods and Cape Woods, and exteriors of the Willow Woods, and, thank you, and then, so, every time I get into a conversation with P D, there's always like, what are you doing for the community? What is the community benefit for me approving your neighborhood? Well, the first one is in Southwest is a major road, that we're making our contribution towards that, but we're going beyond that. We're adding landscaping, we're birmingham, and we're trying to make it look like a, an entry to the park. And by the way, the park is also very important to us, because what do empty nesters do for exercise? You know, they walk, they ride bikes, and having a park adjacent to our property, and we actually are, through our development, we are connecting out to Southwest Major Road so that our walking path is going to be connected to the entryway to the park. There's a, there is a lift station, and I'm going to screw up the direction, but... but there's a lift station nearby on the other side of where the park is going, that there needs to be a sewer line run from there. And Adam can probably tell you more about this, but the sewer line needs to run from there to our project, to the park, to the fire station that you guys are working on now. And we are contributing towards that, um, exten- sewer line extension also as a public benefit to the, uh, as a, kind of public benefit of our development. That, ne- uh, go on, next. We're providing a housing alternative that you currently don't have. And again, as I stated earlier, it's a housing alternative that is gonna let the residents of Blue Springs stay in Blue Springs. We're gonna create tax dollars, obviously. Uh, we're, we're gonna create jobs during construction, we're gonna create jobs during, uh, during the operation of it. One, by our own employees, but also we're gonna be using local land services, landscaping services, snow plowing services, painters, uh, in the maintenance and care of the project. Again, onsite wa- uh, we preserve the commercial on the front of, uh, of the Seven Highway. Onsite walking trails connecting to the park, and we're preserving wetlands and stream areas. I think that's it. Can I ask, answer anyone's questions?
Thank you.
Mr. Bath, would you like that to be entered as an exhibit to our record?
Sure.
The PowerPoint, okay, that'll be Exhibit Nine for both the rezoning and for the PVC concept, concept plan.
Chair, I have another question.
Yeah, yeah.
Can you remind me again when this project is supposed to be completed?
Well, in some ways, it's up to you guys a little bit.
I mean, I didn't miss a dent.
Yeah, I, uh, we would, we would like to start construction this fall, late summer. Um, the construction time on the project will probably be, you know, over a year. You know, 'cause you, we build, building, building, building through, but construction time will probably be over a year.
Any other questions by the commissioners for, for the applicant, uh, Commissioner Phillips?
First off, I, I like the housing type, I really do, and I, I do think it's something we need. I still, I'm just concerned about the, the, uh, private streets. And the reason I say that is because we've had problems in the past. I'm not saying it's, you know, you who, who would do this, but we've had private streets that ended up with potholes and didn't get plowed and all that kind of stuff. And then the city gets all the phone calls and we get all the blame.
So I'm gonna give you the difference to that. The other private streets are, in all likelihood, condominium projects, is that correct?
Actually, it was a commercial project.
Oh, it was, okay. Because I always, I often see condominium projects where the homeowners, especially during the downturn, where there were foreclosures and they weren't collecting homeowners association dues, and the streets have a problem. My issue is, if I don't maintain my streets, my tenants leave. I mean, we have to do it.
Well, after they call the city and complain, that's...
Any, anybody can call the city, and these guys will probably tell you they do all the time.
Um, so, and, and you said that the, the lease restrictions say no parking on the street. Well, what about somebody who doesn't live there? How do you enforce them not parking on the street?
We go to the tenant who they're visiting.
So, because with, especially with a narrower street, one car parking on the street is gonna create a major problem.
Yeah, we're, we're providing, we, we actually really do enforce this. We're providing some of the off visitor parking, but the, I mean, if you think about it for a second, if, if, if you have a visitor and they're coming to your house, and they have a choice of parking on the street or pulling in your driveway, they're gonna, you know, we, we encourage them to pull in the driveway.
I encourage it too, but it doesn't always happen.
I get it. I, I'm, I, look, I'm a big believer that you can't control everybody, but, but we, we, we're good at it.
Um, so, I, so you have onsite management?
Uh, we will have an onsite manager and onsite maintenance person. And not always, often they live there, but not always, but they're, you know, and we're typically sta- staffed every day. So, you know, those, obviously not at night, but we're pretty, you know, staffed during the day, we have emergency numbers at night. We have a computer system that you can send messages over and, you know, if you have some kind of emergency.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions for the applicant by commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Cradoff.
Just to piggyback off of Commissioner's saying, how would you follow up with somebody who parked on the street if you wanted to remove them from that street that same day? Or, or that person, somebody parked a car there and you can't contact, and what would you do?
Well, we are lucky enough tonight to have the lady here who's in charge of that. And I'll let her answer that.
So, so if you're gonna, yeah, if you're gonna, uh, address, address the commission, you just need to be sworn in, state your name and address for the record, please.
Do you sound as where, just wondering about giving this case to the community, so to go on?
I do. Kate Vismag, uh, 7007 East Pleasant Valley Road, Independence, Ohio, 44131. Great question. So, our onsite neighborhood managers have relationships with tenants. So typically, um, there's, you know, two-way communication between us and the tenants, and it, it just typically isn't a problem. If we have people parking on the street, we can locate who that person is visiting, we reach out. And of course, if we have excessive problems, we can always have that car towed.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant, other commissioners?
I have a couple more questions.
Yeah, Mr. Cradoff, go ahead.
Uh, I'm glad to, to hear that you're accommodating disabilities, uh, people with wheelchairs with the sidewalk. It's, it's good to see that happening. And also, I'm glad you have a walkable neighborhood, so we can find kids that are able to walk on sidewalk instead of walking in the middle of the street when they leave their homes, go catch school buses. So that's a great thing to see. You mentioned something about saving energy. Uh, do you do anything in terms of solar energy with your, your development, or are you in...
We do not.
And the other thing, uh, with your maintenance, you listed several things, uh, what do you do with the siding? Do you have, is that cleaning the siding, is that a part of your...
We, we actually own our own power washing crew. And they visit, there's a schedule, I'm not exactly sure when it is, but they visit every property periodically, and we fully powder wash their properties.
That's, that's good to know, you see some places that don't keep that up, but that's important. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Chair?
Yes, Ms. Peel.
Mr. Bath, I have a few questions myself. One being in the application, it said, uh, and I quote, "Unlock the potential of buildup equity." What do you mean by that, since these are rental units?
Um, it relates to people moving out of their existing homes and be able to sell their home. So, let's, let's say you live in a 300 thou- I don't know what you, you live in a 300,000 dollar house. We're in a time right now, it's kind of a strange time, where a lot of people, they're, uh, are not getting pensions like they used to. Every, you know, a lot of people, people in the public realm still get a lot of private, you know, save money by 401Ks. And some people did a good job at that, some didn't. And we're also in a period of time where returns aren't very good unless you got a stomach for a stock market. And so, a lot of people, the equity in their home is important to them, because it's a piece of retirement. The other thing you have to look at, and I'm, I'm glad for this, but, you know, we're all living longer than we thought we were gonna live 30 years ago. And so, you know, you, you watch some of the television shows and commercials, and a lot of, you know, people are concerned about running out of money before they pass away. And so, it allows them to ta- unlock, unlock the equity in their home and pay us our rent. And you can pay ours our rent for a long time and use a lot of that equity for that home. And fortunately, from a tax perspective, you sell your home, that you don't have, you don't have to pay tax on that gain, right? If you're over 55, you don't have to pay tax on a gain. So, you're able to take that money and use it for your, your retirement however you wish. I mean, if you wanna go travel, go travel, if you, if you just needed to pay regular bills, you gotta dare to pay bills, or you gotta dare to pay rent. But it, it does unlock the cash that you have, equity you've built up in your house. I mean, one thing, especially if you're looking at empty nesters, it's not always the case, but a lot of people have been in their top, their home for quite a while. And, you know, prices are looking pretty good right now on, on homes. And so, a lot of people are choosing to move out of their home, make a strategic decision. A lot of us were burned in the downturn, so, you know, do you wanna, do you wanna take the risk there's another downturn? You're gonna get out when it's high, and they unlock the money, and they come rent. So that's, that's the story.
Okay, number two, you have one maintenance person, is that correct?
Yes, but we co- also contract, uh, we also contract out most of the maintenance.
Okay, uh, number three is, you related to a standard lease, is there a non-standard lease? Or, or are all your rentals a one-year lease?
Um, there are certain circumstances, because we are managing, um, time of year of lease expirations and things like that. There may be some different terms. We, we actually have been toying with some longer-term, two- and three-year leases. But, uh, it also, you know, there are other situations that will come in, and maybe somebody's been there for three years and they only want to stay another six months, well, we'd accommodate that person. Um, and they're also, you know, like, having a lease expire in December is not a good thing. You know, nobody wants to move during Christmas, so we, we will tinker with lease terms to, to stay away from those kind of things.
Okay, and so there's not a lease that's any shorter than a year period?
No, there are some, yes.
There are some?
Yeah, there are some, but it, it's the exception not to rule, and it, it's really special circumstances.
So month-to-month may not be, uh, an exception, or is it?
Typically not month-to-month, it, it, on shorter, shorter lease terms also, there is a, um, an economic incentive to not do that.
Thank you, sir, thank you, Chair.
Any other questions for the applicant? Yes, Commissioner Honeycutt.
What is your target rent for these units?
1,800 to 2,000.
Chair?
Yes, Ms. Stokenberry.
I'm assuming the 2,000 is your larger 1,800 square foot.
That one, those units, there's not a ton of those, and those will be higher.
Oh.
Those could go to 2,300, 2,400.
And they don't go up to a three-bedroom, they would stay at a two-bedroom, just be like...
Yeah, there are only two-bedroom units. It's a, that one is a two-bedroom plus a sunroom.
Thank you.
Any other questions, other commissioners? Mr. Banks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, the rent, we, they were asking about the rent, but then in addition dues, or maintenance fees that they pay in addition to the rent?
No. No. Now, um, again, you pay your own utilities. You pay, you know, trash collection, electric bill, water bill, you pay those things. But no, there, there's no, not like a condominium, like there's homeowner association fee, that, that's not this case.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I'm sure people would be curious about these, so...
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, uh, is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak in favor of this project? We did have, uh, one, uh, speaker form from a Mr. Judd. Yeah, all right. He would like to be sworn in, and then state your name and address, please, for the record.
Yes, sir. David Judd, Blue Springs Christian Church, 7920 South Seven Highway, Blue Springs. I'm the executive pastor at Blue Springs Christian Church. We are the neighbors immediately north of the proposed development. And we just wanted to go on record that, uh, we like good neighbors. Um, they have come and talked to us and explained what they're doing to let us know. And, uh, we do want development on the south side of Blue Springs. We want more families and people to move in so that we can minister to them. And this is a sort of neighbors and development we would like to see adjacent to our church, so...
All right, any questions for this witness? Thank you. Are there any others who'd like to speak in favor, uh, of this project? Okay. Uh, there's anybody who'd like to speak in opposition to this project? We did have one speaker form from a, uh, Mr. Chaney. Mr. Chaney? You could, uh, please be sworn in, state your name and address, please.
My name is Bob Chaney, I live at 1008 Southeast Scarlet Court, uh, here in Blue Springs. So thanks for the opportunity to address the planning commission. A few things I'd like for you to consider. Um, if you'll notice on the side there, the development or the business area that's being left along Seven Highway. Um, and I would urge the planning commission to think about, does that still make sense to leave business, you know, along Seven Highway? If you go up and down Seven Highway, you're gonna see lots of available retail space. And in fact, if you'll recall, a few years ago, I believe this commission approved the Eagles Ridge Planned Residential Overlay Concept, where the developer pitched the idea of a, a retail space that would include a grocery store, a hardware store, uh, several other retail buildings, and yet, nothing's happened. And I would submit to you, there really isn't that much demand for that kind of business along Seven Highway. Recently, the retreat at Chapman Farms was, uh, approved, and that basically has a residential development up to Seven Highway with, I think, a 50-foot kind of green zone. To me, it would make a lot more sense in this area to start using that kind of idea along Seven Highway, rather than letting it become this giant long strip mall. So that's my assessment of that. I'd be interested in thoughts you may have on that.
Okay, any, uh, questions for this witness, other commissioners? All right, thank you.
I do have one other thing. I believe this is being considered as an apartment complex. And so that is defined by the city to be a group of apartment buildings. And an apartment building is also further than defined as multiple dwellings accessed through a common lobby. So I don't think this development actually falls into that kind of scenario. While it's true it's a single lot, to me, it seems like it's much more, uh, I would say duplexes, or perhaps even row houses. So it might make more sense to reconsider it in, in one of those terms.
Okay.
And the last thing I would ask is to consider, uh, on the major road extension, uh, why not go ahead and build it all the way out to the west of the, of the lot? Because it's gonna happen, and it would make a lot more sense to do it now and have it ready to go for the future, rather than waiting for some hodgepodge events to happen in the future. That's all I have. I do think it's a wonderful development, so please don't take any of my con- uh, comments out of context.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any others who'd like to speak in opposition to this project? Yep, if you please come forward and be sworn in, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Kevin Fields, I live at 25809 Southwest...
Mr. Fields, if you could come forward and sit in the line, thank you.
I live at 25809 Southwest Wyatt Road. And my own, only thought here is, why do we need another? We have plenty of multifamily houses on Seven Highway. East or south, north and east, or north and south on Seven. I don't understand what I need anymore. That's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you for letting me talk.
Any, uh, questions by the commissioners for this witness? All right, thanks. Is there any others who'd like to speak in opposition to this project? Any other discussion by the commissioners?
Chair?
Commissioner Peel.
Uh, one of the issues that really bothered me is, uh, because the really, the residential design code is not met with this project uh, because of the size of the garage, I think it was, uh, 74% coverage versus, uh, what's called in the code for 54%. One of the things that bothers me, and also, I'm not a real fan of shared entries, um, but that's, and I'll probably be voting no for the project. Thank you, Chair.
Any other discussion by the commissioners?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Banks.
If I may say, I've seen a property similar to this in my travels, but I can't remember which state I was in. And it's wonderful as far as the dry, the street without curbing. It's very easy maintenance, 'cause they can mow like crazy, 'cause they don't have any curbs to go hit. And as far as the shared maintenance, they have those and lease some, and they seem to love them, and they'll get along fine with them. I'm very much in favor of projects like this, we don't have anything like this here. And I'm probably at that stage where I would be looking at something like this, but, so I mean, I can see where this would be very attractive in our, in our area, so I will be voting in favor of it.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion by the commissioners? All right, now close the public hearing, and ask for a motion on the rezoning.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Banks.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the rezoning for Redwood, Blue Springs, and RZ-12-21-8093.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Banks, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Honeycutt, this will be a roll call vote.
Commissioner Orr?
Aye.
Commissioner Phillips?
Aye.
Commissioner Stokenberry?
Aye.
Commissioner Graham?
Aye.
Commissioner Honeycutt?
Aye.
Commissioner Cradoff?
Aye.
Commissioner Banks?
Aye.
Commissioner Peel?
Aye.
Commissioner Veal?
Aye.
Commissioner Chair Sanderson?
Aye. All right, so motion carried, uh, this will, this item will be recommended and heard by the city council at their Monday, February 7th meeting at 6:00 PM. And now I ask for a motion on the, uh, planned development concept plan.
Mr. S- Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Banks.
Sorry. I'd like to make a motion to approve the... Sorry. I'd like to make a motion to approve the Plan Development Concept Plan for Redwood Blue Springs. The PDC dash one-two-dash-two-one-dash-eight-zero-nine-two with the one staff condition.
Thank you. I have a motion from Commissioner Banks. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Honeycutt. This will also be a roll call vote.
Commissioner Phillips.
Aye.
Commissioner Stokemary.
Aye.
Commissioner Graham.
Aye.
Commissioner Hu Honeycutt.
Aye.
Commissioner Crowe.
Aye.
Commissioner Banks.
Aye.
Commissioner Peel.
Nay.
Commissioner Veal.
Aye.
And Commissioner Rohr.
Aye.
Commissioner Chair Sanderson.
Aye. Okay, I don't want. So that motion carried with the one staff condition. This item will be recommended and heard by the City Council their Monday, February seventh meeting at six P. M. And finally, I'd ask for a motion on the preliminary plat.
Okay, I gotta find it here. Okay, I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair, um, to approve the preliminary plat for Redwood Blue Springs of PP dash one-two-dash-two-one-dash-eight-zero-nine-four with the six staff conditions.
Thank you. I have a motion from Commissioner Banks. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Crowe. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
So that motion carried with the six conditions. All right, I now open the public hearing. Agenda item seven, Site Plan Design Review with Alternative Development Standards, S P D R one-two-two-one-eight-one-zero-one for Rancho's Mexican Restaurant, and I'd ask for exhibits from the city attorney, Jackie Summer.
I offer the following exhibits into the record. Exhibit one, staff report with attachments. Two, applicant plans with attachments. Three, affidavit of publication in the examiner examiner on January eighth, twenty-twenty-two. Four, one-hundred-eighty-five-foot notification map. Five, names and addresses of property owners within one-hundred-eighty-five feet of the site. Six, copy of the letter sent to said property owners. Seven, Title Four Land Use Section Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference, and eight, two thousand fourteen comprehensive plan by reference.
All right, thank you. Now ask for staff, staff's presentation. Ms. Kelly.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda before you this evening are requests for a drive-through-only fast-food restaurant at eight-zero-three Northwest Seven Highway. The approximately is, the property is approximately zero-point-three-one acres and is Zone G B, general business. The site, formerly TN Nails and Chuck Chicken, was previously approved for a fast-food restaurant, drive-through use only. No interior designing was permitted due to the site's inability to meet required parking. The site was originally approved in two thousand five. Just a minute, let me switch. Okay. The site was originally approved in two thousand five with conditions, including the installation of a detention area in the rear west side of the property. At a later date, a parking area was paved covering over the required detention area. No building permit was filed for this parking lot expansion. In October twenty-twenty-one, the applicant submitted an application for a site plan design review to use the property as a fast-food restaurant with drive-through and dine-in options. In November twenty-twenty-one, the planning commission denied the application. The applicant is now proposing to remove the unpermitted paving in the rear of the property to create sufficient room for drive-through stacking and required detention to utilize the existing building as a drive-through-only fast-food restaurant. A twenty-five-foot landscape buffer is required in the rear of the property adjacent to single-family homes. The applicant requests alternative development standards for the waiver of the twenty-five-foot rear landscape buffer. The property currently shares access with the adjacent commercial business to the north, currently T-Mobile. Although staff has, still has some concerns with parking and circulation throughout the site and access to and from T-Mobile, the revised site plan and land use can meet minimum stacking spaces separate from interference with the primary ingress egress lanes. To accommodate a separate drive-through stacking lane, the plan removes the four existing parking spaces on the north side of the building. Staff reviews the application and find that all refuge criteria has been met with the exception of the twenty-five-foot rear landscape buffer and the reduction of required parking spaces from eight to six, and allows improvements to be made on an existing site and land use. The six spaces will be used for employees as there will not be any indoor dining or pickup. Staff recommends approval of the site plan design review with three conditions, and I will stand for any questions.
All right, thank you. Um, does the commissioners have any questions for staff?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Banks.
I have a question. When we, they, you were looking at this design and everything, and with taking out the additional parking in the back and everything, what about delivery trucks? I mean, I gather you, and trash pickup, because if these are, are they gonna be doing this at a certain time? Because there's not gonna be any room with these cars back there.
If I may, I would like to have the applicant respond to this.
I just wondered if the staff considers those things. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other questions for staff by the commissioners? Thank you. All right, would the applicant like to come forward and make and make a presentation or speak? So you need to be sworn in and state your name and address for the record, please.
I do. Jose Angel Martinez. I'm an architect, and I'm representing the new owners, which, by the way, the uh uh, this request uh has nothing to do with the previous request in two thousand five from the original owners. I am representing the new owners, and they just purchased this a few months ago, and we're unaware of the conditions that were not met on, in, when it was previously approved. The, they purchased this building. It was represented that it was a restaurant, and the interior has a full kitchen. It's divided into two bays. The northern bay was the nail salon. The southern bay was represented as a restaurant. We were not aware of the fact that no permit had been issued, business license, for a restaurant. We were not aware that the twenty-five-foot buffer had not been respected, and that parking was done uh in the twenty-five-foot landscape buffer. Also, just as a matter of interest, the, the property originally included all of the north bound, the north property line, which was landscaped, and, and the city required across Eastman's agreement to be celebrated with the tenant to the north, currently T-Mobile. And the Eastment Agreement pretty much places all the burden for the maintenance of that common access on the current owners. And uh, not only that, but it has limited any possibility of really doing anything with this building except the fast food, which we have worked with, with the planning department. They've been very, very helpful in trying to resolve the problem so that um, so that we can have the, the stacking that is required, that we could have the access well-defined so that we do not encroach into the traffic for T-Mobile. And also, with regards to the twenty-five-foot landscape buffer, we are proposing that we take out all of the pavement and the current parking lot that they created in the back there and replace it with the stacking lane, but then with a generous amount of landscaping on either side of the uh, the stacking lane, which it doesn't have right now. Now, the, in order to accommodate the stacking lane, we had to give up four parking spaces on the north end, which would not have been a problem hadn't the cross-eastman's agreement never really been required, because this is their property. Nevertheless, uh, they, they've agreed. The, my clients have agreed. There's really not much choice to give up the four parking spaces, but there's really no way now that it's gonna be just a fast-food restaurant with two, three employees max to meet the eight minimum uh parking spaces that would normally be required. So we have made a really strong effort to comply with those requirements that were imposed originally, but yet allow this business to function. As, as best, it's a very, very difficult site. It's very small, and there isn't too much that we can do other than this, this is a, a site plan that we, we developed uh with, with the planning staff. And it's, it's, I think, may not be a hundred percent ideal, but I think it is very, very uh close to meeting and complying with those requirements which were not met to begin with. That's it.
Okay. Is there any questions for the applicant by the commissioners?
Miss.
Commissioner Veal.
Go ahead. Thank you. So are you saying you are adding another lane in there?
No, the, the lanes exist.
I almost got killed this weekend trying to go to T-Mobile, and I, I ju, I do not see.
It's vacant.
This happening.
T-Mobile is using it right now.
Yes, but what happens when the business gets in there? That's more traffic.
Yeah.
And what happens when the drive-through lane gets backed up?
Well, there, it's been divided. It's wide enough so that you can see there are three lanes. And one of the lanes is, is dedicated to the stacking. There is a separate, the northernmost lane is open for access to T-Mobile.
Okay, I understand now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Banks.
Thank you, sir. Um, I had an ask about deliveries.
Yes.
And the trash pickup back there, because, you know, I'm familiar with the, these two sites there, and it is, I'm glad I wasn't on the planning commission then, but I don't know. Could you answer me, how, are you gonna have evening deli? I mean, I don't know when, more early morning deliveries, because there's not gonna be any room for a big semi to come.
No, this is a small, the, the whole building is sixteen hundred square feet.
Yeah, I've been there.
Yeah, and, and so it's not like, and, and it already has all the equipment in place.
I'm talking about food delivery.
The food delivery would take place, normally in restaurants, it takes place on off-hours. In other words, it would be either early or late.
Okay, the food that's gonna become delivered there that you can prepare will be off-hours?
Yes.
Okay, that's why I.
And same thing, the, the trash, the dumpster is in the same location. We haven't touched that.
Okay.
And it has very easy access for the trash trucks to pick it up, the dumpster, and, and empty it.
Thank you.
Any other questions or the applicant by commissioners? Yes, Mr. Crowe.
I respect the fact that you're making a gallant effort to even try to put anything in there. I think anybody would have some difficulty with the parking situation. But my question to you is, I kinda, I wanna piggyback off what the other commissioner said. Are you gonna have any type of DoorDash or delivery personnel that's coming in and out of there also? Because that would probably impede a little bit that's going on.
I, I don't have an answer for that. Um, the owners have a restaurant in Blue Springs, and it's a, it's a family-owned, family-operated uh business. I can't tell you whether they would use DoorDash or Uber Eats or any of that.
Is it the same Rancho's on, on Outer Road?
Yes, yeah. But there, there is still, we still have six parking spaces. I mean, it's not like they're gonna be sitting out in the middle of, of the uh traffic aisle, uh, if there is a DoorDash or, there's parking.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, could I ask a? The staff question while the applicant's here. You all are wanting trees in the front. Is there any way to just put small shrubs? Because it's already a hard sight coming out and coming in.
That was to fulfill the street tree requirement. Do you wanna elaborate on that? Good idea. Do you wanna say?
Okay, go ahead. Tell me what I did wrong. I asked a question.
The main reason for staff requesting the two tree, um, two street trees there is because that was what was approved under the initial approval that were then later removed.
Right.
If the planning commission does not believe that those are acceptable, um, since this is a site plan design review, the planning commission could approve an alternative compliance landscape plan and just say that those two street trees do not need to be reinstalled.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant by the commissioners? Mr. Veal.
Yes, Mr. Martinez, um, I've got a couple of questions for you. One of them you may not be able, since you're an architect, to answer, but uh, number one is, is there a menu board where you order? Is that, will that be on the north side of the building and kinda in the middle, or where would that be? Number two is, uh, what is the anticipated service time at the pickup window?
The, first of all, with regards to the menu board, if you count four cars back, the, the men, the order station would be, you can barely, you can barely see it. Should have been, but right in the back, there's an, there, right there.
The order box? Are you talking, are you, are you asking about a menu board or the order box for clarification?
Typically, um, I guess I can't really see typically, but I think more than often, the menu board and the ordering location is the, the one in the same.
I don't know if you can see it because it's small, but the order box is noted. Uh, if you can see where my cursor is, it's right there. Right, about the fourth car back.
We, we drew it a little too small.
Well, yeah, that's, that's why I asked. And the second question, can you answer that one or not?
Are you talking about hours of operation?
No, no, no. As far as, uh, between the time that I place my order, how long would it take me to be able to pick it up at the pickup window? And the only reason I ask that is because stacking possibilities.
That's a question for operations, and, and, and you're right, that's not a question to ask me, but um you know, I can't see why, uh, first of all, the, that's what their business, that's what they know, that's what they do. And uh, so, not speaking for them, but I, I don't think they'd be in business real long if there were long waits. There'd be a lot of complaints and all sorts of other problems.
Yeah, I understand, and thank you for trying to answer that. The, again, my main issue would be if it takes some kind of period of time to pick up your order, then there's a possibility of some stacking back that's gonna be a dangerous situation, but thank you for trying.
Well, uh, they have told me, because I have asked a peripheral question, and they say a lot of their customers call the orders in, and then they, they just go and pick them up, so, but obviously, there will be others that will be
Sure.
going there and ordering, so.
All right. I appreciate it, Mr. Martinez. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Any other questions for the applicant by the commissioners? Mr. Moore.
Can I go back to the staff? On this layout here that you guys go through, normally you don't see this, and I know you guys approved it based off, or you're, you're saying it's okay, but there's like four places you say address all concerns from Public Works Department that the applicant must, they would do that anyway, right? So why is it, why is it bold four times? Is there a?
Your question, if I'm understanding, you're, you're asking why we, we noted that they should.
Why you noted it and why you noted it in bold four different times? I just.
To draw emphasis, just to, just to state that they need to follow Public Works requirements.
All right, very good. Thanks.
Any other questions by the commissioners for the applicant? Yes, Mr. Crowe.
I have a question for staff also. I'd like to go back. Uh, can you explain to us the place that used to be in there? Can you explain to us the place that used to be in there? I think there was nail, like you mentioned, a nail place, a chicken place or something. How did, how did that business run? Just out of curiosity. Any issues with traffic?
I wasn't here at that time, but I understand that it was operating as a drive-through only chicken, a fast food restaurant and a nail salon. Do you wanna elaborate on that?
So when this was originally approved in two thousand and four, it was approved as a two-tenant building, half of which was a nail salon. The south half was a, a drive-through restaurant. At that time, because of the, the concerns regarding the access and the parking, it was specifically limited to a drive-through only restaurant for that reason. According to our business license records, it appeared that that restaurant was only in there for maybe a year or two at the most, and hasn't had a license since at least two thousand and seven or two thousand and eight. And so over the last twelve years, it has been only used for a nail salon. And so that's the reason why we have required them to go back through a site plan and design review process is because it's lost any non-conforming status as a drive-through restaurant. Additionally, since that time, the T-Mobile site has been developed to the north. So we had to reevaluate it based on the current conditions and not how it was built when it was built in two thousand and four. So that's the reason for reviewing this. And why we brought it forward in November and had some concerns about it. And the applicant has made some revisions. Again, there's still some concerns. I don't think there's anything that's gonna go in here that's not gonna be a concern just because of the, the size of the site and the access limitations and the shared access with the T-Mobile site. So regardless of what uses in here, there's, there's still gonna be the same, same concerns. So we, we worked with the applicant on coming up with a solution that at least provides some separation between the drive-through stacking spaces and the access drive. Yeah, Mr. Ralph?
Yeah, thank you Chair. Sir, if you have had conversations with the owners, do they know about, you know, do they ever max out their drive-through capabilities? I know our code requires eight stacking spaces. But sometimes that is a little bit over than what is actually used. And as we see, you know, and, and with the location on Forty Highway, I've almost never seen eight stacking or cars stacked there. However, with the raising canes over on Adams Ferry Parkway, our stacking requirements are not nearly enough. So, do you know from your interactions with the owners, how many cars that they have in a peak hour that could actually, where I'm getting at, is what is the likelihood that the, that some cars seven and eight will actually be there?
Well, I, I don't think anybody can predict that. I mean, you know, we don't control that and you can't, you can't control that. As far as have, if, they haven't been operating this, it's not open. So there's no experience specifically with this site. And they have not raised any concerns of theirs with regards to this specific site and, and the business that they, they would like to operate here that would relate, that would, to any, any stacking problems. So, I'm sorry, that's not.
I certainly understand, I just didn't know if, in your conversations.
Well, I have, yes. But, but as I said, you know, they, they have raised their concerns based on their experience. And none of them is traffic-related or stacking-related.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant by the commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Kratos.
I, I think you guys have some delicious food there at your restaurant. I know it's a pretty popular place, and I could see it being really busy. It'd be nice that if you could come up with some different ideas about this situation, come back and talk to us again. We'd love to have you there. You do a great business, like I mentioned, on the Outer Road. But I'm kinda torn in between what would happen if you got in there and if these things occurred. Can you respond to that?
I'm not sure what the question is. Would you please repeat?
With the, with the staff just mentioned about the stacking, they said you're not quite sure about that. You know, you're not, you don't seem so sure about that yourself.
No, I mean, you go to McDonald's and sometimes the, the stacking isn't enough. You're, you're blocking the, the exit lane on, on peak hours. You can't, sometimes there isn't anybody that, well, no, there's usually. But, but that's something that's really, I don't know how you, how you can predict or, or foresee. I mean, it's a modest business, and so, it's, it's not a McDonald's where you, yeah, you would really need a lot more stacking space. So I, I think it's, it's, it complies with the requirements and I think it is proportionate to, to the size of the business.
Well, you make a valid point. Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak in favor of the project? Anybody in the audience who'd like to speak in opposition? And I do have one speaker form from Joy Copes, Copes? You can come forward and please be sworn in, state your name and address for the record. Yeah, sure. Yeah, you'll both need to be sworn in.
Joy Copes.
You sound like you're swear, I'll swear you both in at the same time. You sound like you're swear the customer you're about to give this case.
I do. I'm here on behalf of both myself and my wife. My name is Joy Copes and I presided ninety-five twenty-five Cotswold Lane, Lincoln, Nebraska. And my wife, her name is Lori.
Hello. We, we are just a small business. We just have T-Mobile that we purchased back in two thousand and eight. And we have one other commercial property in Lincoln itself. So we're a very small mom and pop, so we do appreciate, you know, what they're coming from. And I'm sorry, I don't do this very often, so. Anyway, our main opposition is kind of everything you brought up in your discussion. The main thing that we think is probably the, one of the areas, is that entrance. It is only twenty-five foot wide, and that is not three lanes. I think a standard lane is ten to twelve. So you're not gonna get three lanes across there. I mean, you can try, but it's gonna be very difficult to make a turn. And if you have any car bigger than a normal size. We were in the parking lot today, and I mean, there were several good-sized workers' trucks, like they were on their break, getting their phone taken care of. So they're not the normal small, you know, vehicles pulling in. They fit in a parking spot fine, but, so that's, so that is our main concern. And as you brought up, I think this gentleman here about the spots seven and eight. If a car pulls in there, if they have a seventh and eighth person in their line stacked up, it then creates a problem for our customers leaving. And there is kind of that big section right there that just is completely, could be quite a situation. We are very tight for parking. We have ten spots plus a handicap with the access for handicap, which probably wouldn't, they built that, we purchased it after the architects got the all approval. And so we, you know, purchased it from Wireless Vision. And so at that point, you know, everything was set in space with the ten lot, the spots. So we are pretty tight. That is our manager of the store there. And he can attest to, they work with keeping it. T-Mobile does pay for an additional six to eight spots from the business that's behind there for their own employees to park because of the employee parking, and the employees would take up any business spots. So the drive-through plan concerns that we talked about, cars seven and eight would create that. We still concerned that if customers do have to pull forward, if their order isn't ready, where are they going to go there? It just kind of still builds up that issue. As I said, the ex, the exit route crosses with the restaurant customers' entry route. That's a safety concern, because there are many customers that do actually park across the street and walk across Highway seven to go to T-Mobile instead of trying to park there. So there's, there's a lot of craziness going on in that little parking lot. Let's see. And then, when I look at the parking limitations, or they have it set for six spots. And there is a handicap one, I noticed at the end. But it does not have an access lane for the handicap person. So it's just kind of blocked in there, so then there's no, so that would limit it if they had to have that access point, which I don't know what the ADA requirement is for that. Then that would bring them down even one more spot, to only four parking spots plus a handicap. He did answer some of our questions about how many employees are on a shift. If there's two to three, and there's four to five spots. You know, there's also employees, or there's manager, or there's owners. There could be vendors that maybe aren't delivering, but vendors coming. And as well as inspectors, stuff like that happening. And just our other, you know, concern. After coming down and visiting it today, we see most of the construction is done. So that's not quite as much that they'll block our entrance in that. But it really does come up to that congestion point at the road on Highway seven and then in spots seven and eight. How our employ, how our customers are gonna get out of the parking lot, so. Any other thoughts, Joy?
Well, I just would, I, I guess I would just like to also kind of emphasize some of those other points that Lori has made about the, the, how tight that is. I know that you had ma, made that comment coming into the facility. It is rather narrow. The diagram that shows three points of entry. It does show entry for, for the restaurant, you know, and exit. But not from our business, you can just see there's an entry point. But it being twenty-five feet wide, I think cars, and Lori may have said that require at least like ten, that would allow for two cars to get by there. I think I've driven in there with my truck before. It's pretty narrow with a truck. Two cars can get through that entryway. But that's with ten feet, which is kind of a code, I think. That would really allow you, that would be total twenty feet, then allowing you an extra four feet. So you don't have a lot of space in that tight opening to, to, for egress, ingress. The, so that, you know, and the stacking. When I've been to restaurants, I know that I've been pulled in and I'm not aware of what the current stacking number is. I don't consider that. I guess I pulled in and I may be all the way to the edge of the street just to get off the street and access the restaurant. And so that can become a problem if you get eight cars or more in there for my clients that are next door and then they're, you know, waiting in a line. You know, if, if, if that parking, and, you know, to address that again, the parking is being restricted down from their requirements of going from eight, I guess, down to six. And having reduced that number, then you've got six spots without, and, and that would include a handicap spot. If that handicap is addressed properly, you would actually reduce that down even further to four. You would have a handicap and you really need as, a, a, an aisle. That's an ADA requirement that would allow access for those people once they've parked to, you know, enter and exit their vehicle. So that's a sixty-inch minimum. So with four spots for parking, I can't imagine a time where you would have people in line think, well, maybe I'll just pull into this spot and see if I can go in, in order. Or, and with four spots, you know, you, like mentioned previously, you have vendors coming in and they don't necessarily stick to business hours. You've got, you've got employees that need to park there. You would have, with four spots, I mean, you would need at least, you know, you don't have any room for vendors, you don't have construction people. And then you've got owners and inspectors and people. So the parking there and is kind of a congested, as it appears, you know. And, and I'd also with, you know, my, Brian I brought with me, he's the business manager. He can attest to how busy it is in there. And I do know how busy it is because I've had people occasionally parking in the lot that's just to the north. It's the cigar shop and the people will actually cut across that east. And it's, because, and during business hours, that, that is quite of a filled-up parking lot. That's, that's for sure. But anyway, that's, you know, it's very tight in there and I, I am concerned with adding more traffic congestion to that location and the stacking with that. And that being an issue with, you know, how traffic is handled on the street. You know, it's, I mean, you can't guarantee eight cars.
See, you have to. Yeah, okay. Are there any questions for the witnesses by the commissioners?
I have one.
Yeah, Commissioner Kratos.
Thank you for your commentary. It's interesting what you mentioned about the disability parking situation. Just out of curiosity, have you had any discussions with the owners about buying the property from them?
I wish we had, actually. We both were kicking ourselves if we didn't realize what was going on.
I didn't know.
We kind of had taken for granted the chicken place had never been occupied. And so we worked fine with the nail salon people and there never really was. And then it's just kind of life moved on and we missed that one. So we did actually talk to the cigar shop guy and that thing, actually, about buying that big.
Yeah.
But he wouldn't negotiate price and that was way beyond what T-Mobile or we were wanting to go to. So it's funny, because it would have been probably a better fit, but.
Any other questions for the witnesses or the, sorry, yeah, witnesses on this project? Yeah, Commissioner Beal.
Thank you. You own the T-Mobile next door?
Yeah, we own the building and the land. And then T-Mobile, or Wireless Vision is the company that franchises from T-Mobile. So they, or they rent from us and they have a twenty-year lease. So they're leased with us through two, twenty twenty-eight.
Okay, you own the building and they?
The building and the land.
Okay, and then they lease it from you?
Right.
Okay. I, because I know how, I, the chicken place never really got off the ground.
No.
They, I remember when, I used to go to T and Nails and they built that. And that's why we've never really had a problem, because they never really opened up.
No, exactly.
I think they opened, made the chicken thing for the employees.
Could be.
You know, to be honest. So I, I don't think we've ever had a situation where we had to drive-through.
No.
So, but I do know that there's a congestion at T-Mobile for parking because of the property next door gets all out of your cars.
Right.
So now this is gonna be, so I'm just, I understand the situation.
It's tough and, yeah, I do, we just worry a lot about any future pro, I mean, it could be tough for employees backing out, or guests backing out. And, because we really don't have a very big backing. When they designed that, it wasn't very strong for, like, the two rows to be backing out of each other. So our, our trash bin does get hit quite often by people, I believe, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the witnesses by the commissioners? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else in the audience who'd like to speak in opposition to this project? One second, yeah. Yep. So you need to be sworn in, state your name and address, please, for the record.
You sound like you're swear the customer you're about to give this case.
Yes, sir. Oh, okay. Excuse me, this is my first time doing this. My name is Brian Blackwell. I live at sixty-three oh one North Bells Avenue, Gladstone, Missouri. So.
Mr. Blackwell, if you could keep things to things that haven't been stated yet as well.
Say that again?
If you could keep it to things that haven't been stated already for the record.
Oh, for sure, for sure. So, thank you Joy, for bringing me on board. But what I was gonna say, having a visual of this is, it is a little bit easier to, to see. And I actually took over management of this location last March. So luckily, I was able to see having a secondary tenant there with the nail salon. So it, it did get very crammed in that entrance way there. So obviously, I know you said not to state anything of the obvious. But there would be times when we would have customers kind of lining up and what you could consider in that picture there, like our entryway. And it, and it gets pretty, pretty intense. I would say at least maybe three to ten times a day. It's, we get some kind of complaint on our parking, which, you know, it's not on us, you know, not on Joy, obviously purchased beforehand and whatnot. But you also can't stop people from going somewhere where they do get a, a great experience, which is our location. So we do, we do provide that and we try to keep providing that. So we're not gonna say, hey, go to this other store down the road that you're gonna get better parking and something like that. So I would say, you know, that, that's why we. So I would say, you know, that, that's why we, we like where we're at, you know, our owners love where we're at and we like being there. So I would say that we, we do try to get people in and out as quick as possible, but sometimes it, it is a little, you know, longer than usual. You could have like a, a family of five, a single woman with a kid, husband getting off work. And it just may take longer than usual, but we, we still, you know, try to keep everybody in line, you know, calling back. Hey, if you want to take off, go grab some lunch to, and we're just trying to think of ways to get extra spaces there without any type of congestion. It just, sometimes it can get a little, you know, a little, a little crappy with the whole situation there. But I would say when the, when the nail salon was there, it was a little bit obtainable, but I can only imagine with a, with a restaurant being there. Again, with this being my first time and kind of learning right out the gate how this is working, if it's going to get stacked, I could only imagine. My thing that I was actually telling my team the last couple of days was any restaurant usually, and I could probably say for any of you guys here, hey, you know, it is busy. Let's go next door. So now we got to worry about not only are you waiting for your food or you're wanting to get something to eat, now you're probably going to park that car in our, you know, parking lot and you're still trying to get your food. So now we've got John over here getting food, trying to park in the parking lot, and it's just kind of doubling down, taking up the extra spaces. So, yeah, that's pretty much all I've got. Nothing crazy. Like I said, we try to keep it in and out as quick as possible, but sometimes it can get a little longer for us. But we do, we don't intentionally try to keep people longer. I heard a couple of you guys say you've been there. So I promise we don't try to keep everybody, so that's all I've got.
Thank you, Mr. Blackwell. Any questions for the witnesses by the commissioners?
Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Peel.
Mr. Blackwell, what's the current operating hours for T-Mobile?
So we are open from ten, Sundays we're open eleven to six, Monday through Saturday, we're open from ten to eight.
So eleven AM is when you open?
On Sundays. And then Monday through Saturday is ten, yeah.
Ten o'clock to?
Ten o'clock, ten AM, yes.
Ten to eight.
Okay, ten to eight. All right. Thank you, Mr. Blackwell. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Yep, you're welcome. Any other questions for this witness?
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other speakers like to speak in opposition to this project? Would the applicant like to come back forward and, and address any of the comments made?
Yes, I'd like to make a couple of points here. First of all, I'm going to say our site was there before T-Mobile was there. What you're hearing now is a problem that was created by the city. Because the city imposed that cross-easements agreement and the city approved T-Mobile knowing that they did not have adequate parking. What you're hearing is they have a parking problem. And so we're going to shut down the business next door so that we don't have a parking problem. That doesn't seem fair to me. The second thing is that the driveway is twenty-five feet wide. That is typically imposed, that's a standard that planning would impose. And especially off of a major thoroughfare as in this case. And the reason for the cross-ass easement agreement is to, to not have a lot of driveways into a major thoroughfare. So they just decided, well, let's just have this guy use, share his driveway for T-Mobile. So it's, it's, it seems like T-Mobile has a parking problem. And it's, it's not fair now to, since this business was there first, the cross-access easement agreement was imposed by the city. And either they give them a driveway, their own driveway, and they, and, and they need to find places for their own parking. But be complaining that, that the neighbor is inconveniencing them and therefore they shouldn't have a business, I think is totally unfair. We have made great efforts to, to comply and we think and planning staff thinks that this can work. It's not going to work if T-Mobile is inconvenienced or if they want the parking for themselves. Of course, it's not going to work. But it's a bad situation that, that was created by the city. And this is, I think, a, a very acceptable solution.
That's it.
Any, any other further questions by the commissioners for the applicant? Yes, Commissioner Peel.
Yes, Mr. Martinez, what's our operating hours for this drive-through, anticipated operating hours for this drive-through?
I believe they, I believe they open like, I'm not sure. Let me first say, I'm not sure. But I, I have discussed this. And I believe they, they're, they plan to open like about eleven and operate until eight or nine.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Thank you, Chair.
Any other questions for the applicant by the commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Crowe.
How, how does this store differ, differ from the other store, would you say?
Well, no, the other store, and, oh, and in fact, this has even improved that whole area of conflict. Because on the north side of the building, there were four parking spaces in diagonal. So it was a longer, so they, they, they took up more room of that area than what we have just proposed. It's actually, they have, they have better access with this plan than with, with the way it, it is currently right now with the four diagonal parking spaces there.
I see. So how would this differentiate on how you distribute your, your goods from your store or pulls to the other store on outer road?
Well, the other store.
What's going to be the difference? Are there any similarities? Because you sell alcohol and you have a restaurant and bar at the other place.
Yeah, I don't think that they would, no, alcohol is not, has not been at all considered. And it's not a dining, it's just carry-on.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? All right, any other further discussion by the commissioners?
Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Honeycutt.
My concerns continue with this, with this whole plan is it's just way too small and way too cramped. The stacking issues are very concerning. They're going to go off into Seven Highway. Parking is very minimal. I think if we're talking about parking, this location has a much bigger parking problem than T-Mobile does. But I think there's just too much impact, potential impact for the surrounding businesses, Seven Highway. The overall project is just not something I can support, so I will be voting no on this project.
Thank you. Any other discussion by the commissioners?
I have one.
Yes, Mr. Crowe.
To piggyback off what the commissioner said, I, I have a, I kind of agree with him, but I have an issue because I kind of agree with the applicant also because he said they're in compliance. Staff says he's in compliance and why should they be responsible for something that the city may have been responsible for? And the other business has the opportunity to do some of the things that they want to do. So it seems like we're kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place here. It's a difficult decision. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have the same concerns. These two should have been built the way they were built and there's nothing I can do about it. But I don't think it should, as long as there's stackings the way it should be, I can't say that I'm not in favor of letting a business have a business. And then if they need parking, we're taking out the concrete in the back so that they can't have it. But it's been there, so we could take part of it out to where they could maybe have a couple more parking spots in the back for the employees. And instead of trees, allow them a few shrubs. I mean, there's things that we can do to have a business here. And I know T-Mobile. I've been to T-Mobile and even with my little cruise, couldn't hardly get out in the back. So I know it's congested, but I can't say that I'm not in favor of allowing a business to go into a place that we caused this problem. So I will be voting in favor of it.
Any other discussion by the commissioner? Yeah, Commissioner Billups.
Yeah, I, I have to agree with that. I, I think we, this is the best situ, the best solution to a bad situation.
Their final comments? Close the public hearing and ask for a motion on the site plan design review with alternative development standards.
Chair?
Commissioner Peel.
I move the site plan design review SPDR one-two-two-one-eight-one-zero-one with three conditions be approved as submitted by staff.
I think you have a motion for Commissioner Peel. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Honeycutt. This will be a roll call vote.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I know there's a motion on the floor that one of the conditions was for trees. So you're leaving the trees in the, in the, as a condition.
Yes, sir. So as stated in, as the staff's report.
Thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt your motion.
I guess as long as, Mr., Commissioner Peel, you're still good with that motion?
Yes, sir. Yes, Chair.
Is there, would you request a motion to amend?
I would like to make a motion to amend the trees.
I'll second that.
To shrubs.
So remove, your motion is to remove the two treats, street tree requirement?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and then you're seconding that Commissioner Honeycutt? So that would be voted on first.
Okay. Okay. So we have a motion from Commissioner Banks with the removal of the street tree requirements and a second from Commissioner Honeycutt. This will be a roll call vote.
Commissioner Stolkenberry?
Aye.
Commissioner Graham?
Aye.
Commissioner Honeycutt?
Aye.
Commissioner Crowe?
Aye.
Commissioner Banks?
Aye.
Commissioner Peel?
Nay.
Commissioner Veal?
Nay.
Commissioner Rohr?
Nay.
Commissioner Billups?
Aye.
Commissioner Chair Sandersen?
Aye. Seven to three. Okay, so that motion carried seven to three. That's it. Yeah, so that motion carried.
Now there'd be a vote on?
On the?
As amended, yes, on the site plan design review as amended.
Okay, maybe I misunderstood. So let's recap. So the one we, the one that was just voted on was the, with the street require, the street trees removed?
Yes.
Okay. So we want to have a vote for as stated in the staff?
With the one amendment, right?
Right.
So do I need to make a new, new motion?
Why don't you go ahead and restate it?
With the one amendment.
All right, for site plan design review SPDR one-two-two-one-eight-one-zero-one with, I guess it would be amended condition for bushes instead of trees. I will move for approval as submitted by staff.
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion from Commissioner Peel and a second from Commissioner Honeycutt. This will be a roll call vote.
Commissioner Graham?
Aye.
Commissioner Honeycutt?
No.
Commissioner Crowe?
Aye.
Commissioner Banks?
Aye.
Commissioner Peel?
Aye.
Commissioner Veal?
Nay.
Commissioner Rohr?
No.
Commissioner Billups?
Aye.
Commissioner Stolkenberry?
Aye.
Commissioner Chair Anderson?
Aye. Okay, so that motion carried seven to three. All right. Our next item on the agenda is items ten and tw, or ten and eleven, Plan Development Final Plan PDF one-two-two-one. I think I'm missing that number. One second, sorry. Eight zero eight zero. And Final Plat PF one-two-two-one-eight-zero-seven-seven for Chapman Ridge First Phase. And ask for staff presentation by Ms. Kelly.
All right, the next item before you this evening, our request for the approval of a PD Final Plan and a Final Plat for a forty-two unit duplex development on approximately three lots. The total acreage of the three lots is approximately eight point two-five acres and is generally located about two-hundred-and-fifty feet north of southeast Colburn Road, west of southeast Chapman Ridge Drive. The property is zoned TFPD, two-family district planned development. The site includes forty-two units within twenty-one duplex buildings. The developer provided two conceptual front building elevations, one story, a one-story and a two-story building with a mix of materials on the front facade, including masonry, vinyl lap siding and vinyl shingle shake siding. All side and rear elevations are proposed to consist of vinyl siding and proposals are consistent with what was approved with the concept plan. As part of the PD Concept Plan Approval, four open space systems will be provided. These include two pocket parks, a community garden, which consists of a gazebo and a pollinator, pollinator garden, and an eight-foot hiking and biking trail along southeast Chapman Ridge Drive, which will accommodate future bike and pedestrian connections to Roscoe Rider Park to the north. Staff reviewed the applications and find that all review criteria has been met and allows the site to be developed. Staff recommends approval of the Final Plat with conditions and approval of the PD Final Plan with conditions. And I'll stand for any questions.
All right, thank you. Any questions for staff by the commissioners? I see none, thank you. Would the applicant like to come forward and speak? Just need to have your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Jim Long with Schlegel &amp; Associates, seventeen twenty, excuse me, fourteen-nine-twenty West Hundred Seventh Street, Lenexa. I can answer any questions.
Sounds good. Any questions for the applicant by the commissioners? I see none, thanks. Any discussion by the commissioners? Okay, then I would entertain a motion on the Plan Development Final Plan.
Chair?
Commissioner Peel.
I move the Plan Development Final Plan PDF one-two-two-one-eight-zero-eight-zero for Chapman Ridge First Phase with five conditions be approved as submitted by staff.
I think you have a motion from Commissioner Peel. Do I have a second?
Second.
Honeycutt or Crowe? Second from Commissioner Crowe. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that motion carried with the five staff conditions and I entertain a motion for the Final Plat.
Chair?
Commissioner Peel.
I move the Final Plat PF one-two-two-one-eight-zero-seven-seven for Chapman Ridge First Phase with the four conditions be approved as submitted by staff.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Peel. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Honeycutt. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that motion carried with the four staff conditions. All right, on to other business. Mr. Wright? Your next meeting will be Monday, February fourteenth, and we do have some agenda items for that evening. So that will be our next meeting and staff does not have any other business. Any other business by the commissioners? And then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So a motion for Commissioner Honeycutt and a second from Commissioner Peel. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, it's me as adjourned.